Yummy. Looks like a good evening.
We could start it now and you could turn the front off.
I'll let you do.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got a whole stack of stuff for you.
It's no good.
It's not recording.
Yeah, that one is. Throw that one away. I just thought that that thing stopped.
You're good. It'll go red when it's done.
And I don't have the water without if anybody wants to take a minute. Put some water.
Okay, I will see if I can bring some in.
These guys, I've got three on this side.
Okay. I'll slide over. I'm going to put all of this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can emphasize with the deer.
Yeah.
Did Sharon get one yet?
Gave one to Sharon.
I didn't hear.
Her angels is.
Forty. Hey, there's an extra one up there.
I've got a bag of.
Greg took.
Crumple. Okay, you're here. You're here.
Fresh air. Not that yours was stale. It was just hot.
I haven't forgotten.
I don't know. I could get a few extra. I need to get brain one of these.
Carl's probably going to just leave a little bit so it goes a little bit more.
Yeah, there's like. Are you on compensation?
The employee. Yes, yes.
Did you guys make the report before? Just to have a 3%.
Yes. And when we need time to build it, review of the minutes.
Uh huh.
But we didn't suggest waiting. In fact, I'm the one that brought. Tell me when you want me to share that with the group.
All right. That'll be right at the beginning here.
Okay. He won't be here tonight. He's had his minor surgery.
Oh, really? Okay.
He likes Santa Claus, I think.
Yeah, he's on the street.
I was so happy to see that I can vote against one more subject.
Vote against one more what?
Subdivision out by Phil.
Oh. Yeah, I had somebody call me about that.
Isn't that the same one that we had trouble with before?
Yes.
Right. Pass me.
I wore. I, I. Maybe you can get the man right there. Carl, Carl, he can read that.
Yes. Oh.
It's part of this subdivision now.
Okay. Oh, okay.
She defected all this. Has to be bringing it over for her.
All right, I'll read it for us to discuss. Thank you.
John and I, we've been through a lot together.
You seen me here just.
Update.
Oh, yeah.
Nice thing is you don't.
Yeah, you can't thank smile. I'm reading Grant too.
All right, are we here? We're ready to begin our meeting. I apologize for us being late. I'm going to blame it on the county attorney's office though because we were here early to.
Mr. Chairman, what was that? Could you say that again?
You want to blame it on the county attorney's office? Okay. They, they had a meeting and it went later and it made it so that we were later getting everything set up that we needed. And so anyway, we apologize.
Thank you all for being here.
Nice to see. Here and here to listen and to participate. We, we appreciate very much you, you being willing and able to. We'd like to make a special welcome back to John White.
Here, here.
And Don. We've missed you, John.
I missed you, but you know, it's the best budget. I, you finally got it down. I didn't get stressed this year.
Good. All right, we'll start this, this evening by having an opening by Councilman David Erickson.
I'd like to present my opening in the form of a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful to be able to come here together this night. We're grateful for each other, those in attendance and those in the decision-making process. We're grateful for this beautiful country that we live in. We're grateful for the homes that we have, the necessities of life, the happiness which we enjoy, positivity around us, and the abilities to overcome everything that may come our way. We would at this night ask thee to help us, help us in decisions that we may be prudent, that we, we also have, be in good judgment in everything that is discussed, that we will be diligent in, in finding the details and helping each other understand. We pray for understanding always. We pray for thee to bless each and every member of this community, that protection will be with them, that health will be with them, and we'll all be better community members and help each other in every way possible. We're again thankful for everything which we enjoy, the freedoms, the happiness of this country, and the ability to associate with each other, make friends with each other, and to bond and celebrate this time of year. We humbly say these things and ask for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you stand, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dave. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda for this night, this evening?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor of approving our agenda?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, review and approval of our minutes from our last meeting. That was just last week, December 1st. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There is one that Sharon would, is going to read to us right now.
Yeah, Clerk Auditor Bradfield made this correction on the last page talking about Resolution 2026, adopting the budget. About two-thirds of the way down, talking about part-time versus full-time staff. And he said he wants to change from there on to say two key employees have retired and need to be replaced. One position was part-time, but Bradfield wants to upgrade it to full-time. The employee was previously full-time but became a seasonal employee after his retirement. The office needs a full-time elections worker. That's the change he would like to see made.
Any questions about, about that change?
No, but I will add that where it says one position was part-time, there's a typo and it says one position was pat-time. Since you're changing it, if you would mind changing that as well.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Is that enough?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any follow-up to the minutes for our last meeting? All right. Well, we'll turn the time now to our county executive, Craig Butters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have any appointments to present to council at this time. The financial reports have been put on the server, so they're there for your access. If you'd like to, if you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer those now or, or at another time. And many of you recognize a new face in the, or new bald head, I guess, in the room. Okay. Paul's feeling a lot more in company. He has company.
Membership's grown for sure.
But I'd like to introduce to you our new economic development director, Sean Mill. Sean, you want to come up and just say a few words? I got to quit using that term, don't I? Sean started with us yesterday and I've met with him, spent quite a bit of time with him. I think he has a good, a good feel for our community, for our county. And we've been working on some benchmarks that we want to, to use to, to determine the success of this position and moving forward what we want to, what we want to see happen. So I'll just go ahead and turn some time over to Sean for his introduction and, and welcoming to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Butters. I appreciate that. Good evening, council and, and all. So I am Sean Mill, Twella County Commissioner formerly and some other public service roles that I've enjoyed over the years. And I think it's helped train me for this opportunity that you've offered and that I'm really looking forward to. First and foremost, I just want to say and commend this wonderful community and the county council and, and your staff. Everybody from Amy Adams, your HR Director, and the interview panel. And I've played tourist for the last couple of weeks since the offer was made. Am I able to take this down? I feel like I'm speaking through some fabric that's kind of challenging to my tongue there. What's that?
You were speaking through some fabric.
Yes, touche. Craig, I'm already messing up on the few words part. Listen, I will just say this. It's been wonderful already and I just started yesterday. For the last few weeks, this community has been a wonderful place to get to know as I've ventured throughout the valley. And I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. I think that you guys are ripe for continued great success like you've already had. And I see it as a, a big honor, but a big responsibility to make sure that it still stays that way, that we maintain a great quality of life and look at all the different elements that make economic development successful. So I hope to do you proud and make the community feel like it is a worthwhile investment of their, their resources. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Happy to address any other questions. If not, I'll take a seat.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our item of special interest, Sheriff Jensen is asked to be moved to the end of the, end of the meeting because he isn't here yet. He's been delayed. So we'll, we'll move on to our public, well, our public hearings were too early for that too. Let's go on to item 12D, consideration of the 2020 COG funding recommendations. We have those on our. On our agenda, on our iPads here. Mayor Young, are you here? I don't see him here to present. Well, then let's pass over that one. Let's go to 12E, property tax relief requests. To do so, we'll need to, a motion to move into the Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're now convened as the Board of Equalization. And we have two requests to consider. We have property number. I don't see the number on here.
It doesn't have a number.
It's one we looked at last week and discussed. We were, we were missing a, a letter from the, from the individual seeking this request that we didn't have. And it's now here on our, on our iPads. I presume everyone's had an opportunity to read through that. Are there any questions? Is there?
I think she qualified for the 38%. Am I wrong?
That's the one I remember too, yeah. I looked at it before we came and it was 38%.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah.
I'd have to, and I'm going by a vague memory, but I thought that's what she qualified for last time.
Yep, that's right.
And we requested the, this, you know, document that's been sent to us. And I think it probably justifies what we're, what we're needing. And, and so I moved to approve, I guess we'll just say TG at 38%.
38 was 15 to 20,000.
She was in between there.
Yeah, that's correct. I looked it up in the.
Yeah, I'd second that, Dave. I think this one shows that there are really vulnerable parts of our population that to, to what we're going through as a society, that not everybody has that ability to hunker down at home and do Zoom meetings and continue their life as normal. There are some folks that are really significantly impacted by a lot of the decisions that are being made. So I would second that.
Motion's been made to approve it at 38% and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Our next item is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. No, we still have one more. We still have one more. Yep. We have a property count, or property number, the last four digits, 0003, that has been presented to us. We have a full packet here this time. And reading through this, are there any questions or concerns about the request? Any, I, any.
The only concern that I had was pretty deep savings. You know?
Yeah.
Was stocked up there, but you know, I guess that's what savings was used for, it should be used for, I guess, for those kind of times. But qualifications is there still?
Other thoughts or comments?
What percent would she fall in if we was to approve it?
38.
38.
38 again, yep.
Yeah.
I would move that we go ahead and grant her 38%.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, I think we've completed the business that's needed as, as our.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go ahead and vote in the Board of Equalization.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're still, oh, we're moving through here in, in a hurry.
Mr. Chairman, I saw Mayor Young arrive. If we want to move to 12D.
Okay. Mayor Young is here. We're ready to consider the 2020 COG funding recommendations, Mayor Young. If you have anything you'd like to share with us, we'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. Apologize for holding up if I did. It's good to have the flexibility when someone's on time, right? Really appreciate it. This year's COG experience, this has been quite a few years that I've been involved in COG. And just want to make a couple note. Last year, there, there was probably more discussion last year about COG and funding and how we do that, the process with all of the mayors and the participation and then coming to council and having the review and then back to COG.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment? We, we, we are so proliferated with acronyms. We have people here from the public and they may not know what COG is.
You bet.
Brief explanation of COG so they can understand.
Sure, sure. With another acronym? No, I'm kidding. Yeah, so the Cache County Council of Governments, it's, it's basically a membership of all of the mayors in the county that participate in a committee to help distribute tax funds that have been set aside specifically for growth and preservation of Cache Valley when it comes to road growth, as well as some forms of mitigation when it can come to traffic and other things. And so there's a committee that's been set up that has been functioning for years now. And that committee is to basically allocate those funds appropriately and give recommendations to the county council. The county council oversees all the funds. The funds come into the county. And so that committee, that committee starts, gosh, in, we, we start early in the year and it goes through most of the year. And then obviously we're in December now of decisions. We've had multiple meetings where cities will give presentations. The county gave presentations, a bunch of different cities. One of the things to make note with that, that I think is valuable in Cache County that has been a worthy option is Cache County recognized that a good portion of our county is rural. And so one of the things that can happen is, is these funds can be used very quickly in large areas. So Logan traditionally gets a bulk of the funds and different ones with surrounding areas, which oftentimes will leave smaller communities that don't receive as much. And so there's a, what, what has been called the rural set-aside, which is a percentage of the money that gets set aside specifically for rural projects. And then those funds, basically if you're in that rural area, when you apply for the funds, it'll come out of that portion. And then, just like this year, if those funds aren't used all the way, those funds then will, then will roll up so that they then can be used by either the current year or the next year that, that follows. So does that give?
Yeah.
Kind of a help on that one. And, and this year in particular, one of the things that, the advantage of having a committee outside of the Cache County Council to oversee this is there's just a lot going on. And so this year, we were able to go through and credit to Jeff Gerbert, who has helped so much in organization and everything, is we keep track of all the open projects. So every year, there's a range of four to six million dollars that gets to be utilized for roads. And we then allocate those funds and then whoever receives those funds has six years to, to then use the funds. And if those funds aren't used within that timeframe, or as what's happened, sometimes projects aren't, are either completed and funds aren't used, or some of the project scope might tweak or change and, and be able to come back. So this last year, there were a total of $964,805 that actually came back into the COG fund that were priorly allocated that are now going to be reused. A good example is about 500,000 of that came from Wolfpack Way where the school is. And so there was some additional funding that, that was able to be secured, working with the different agencies. And that then changed the allocation that was needed. And so those funds were able to come back. And the way the committee's set up now, the committee can adjust funds to be utilized in a similar area. So if the COG is approved, this stretch of road, and there needs to be a minor adjustment, the executive committee, which includes a, a chair, which is myself right now, and then the county, which is Craig Butters, and a couple others that they can, they can decide on smaller amounts. But if it's a larger amount, that will always be kicked back to the full COG committee, which in return, those decisions are kicked back to the county council. Yes?
If it's rural money that gets kicked back, does it go back out only into rural?
Jeff, that's a good question. I actually have never had that question before.
So in any given year, if there's enough rural applications to take up that rural set-aside, obviously they would get that funds. If there's not enough rural projects, then it goes back into the, any area. So it could go any area, including the urban area in that year. So that's what's happened this year.
I just noticed that there's always a bunch of rurals that don't get funded.
Well, and it's, you know, if there would have been applications this year, they would have been a slam dunk.
This year was 100% rural funded.
It was unusual that we didn't have enough applications from those rural areas.
All the applications they got.
All, all that were in there got funded. And if, if there was another one that applied, they would have been a slam dunk. So, but if they don't apply, then we just roll it back into the general fund.
Since we got a situation where they generally don't get funded and they, there's very many opportunities for them, I'd almost think that it would be better if it's once allocated to the rural, it stays there for their opportunity the next year.
Yeah, is there a way to make?
Always, you know, this is a weird year, but there's hardly, they hardly ever get funded. It's always used in much larger projects.
Well, and keep in mind that set-aside is always rural and no one else can stake claim to that except just the rural groups.
Yeah, but if they don't use it, then it's, rolls back into the main.
Correct.
It wasn't used in the rural.
Yeah.
I don't think you got anything in your bylaws that says that it has to go back to the main, the main fund, does it? Can't we just keep it as a separate fund in the rural and let it be available for the next year?
You're bringing an interesting topic of, we've actually discussed the rural quite heavily on the balance of that. One of the things to keep in mind, the, the original law that went in place didn't specifically mention anything rural and didn't mention anything about what rural would accomplish. The, the law in general focused on mitigation. And you can always say mitigation in rural is we have 30 cars in this traffic light causing a traffic jam rather than, you know, the 500 in Logan. And so with, with that being the case, the big discussion is, is the rural set-aside was actually a COG-specific request agreed on the mayor's. We've had, we've had multiple discussions on how exactly, how detailed and how far can that go? And we even asked just this last year if we might need to seek legal counsel and better understanding from the state statute that we're governed under and the local one and how to balance that difference, if that would be, if that would even be an option. And then of course, the, the COG could look at that and say, yeah, we want to hold that difference. One of the concerns is that those funds could eventually grow enough that it's a substantial amount that then could offset somewhere else. But it's a valid, it's a valid request that we can take back to the COG to further look into that.
Well, after we've watched it for all these, this many years and there's hardly ever any funding going to the rural area. They just don't score up high enough. I just don't think that'll ever happen other than maybe this freak year.
I, I guess I'm, so the rural is always set aside every year.
Okay, but they, they didn't have enough people. They didn't have enough cities or they didn't, well.
It's based off the funds.
Can't even apply, but the more rural towns, very, very seldom, they very seldom get funded. And if they do, it's not a lot, because not a lot is set aside. But for the unknown reason, not very many applied this year. And it's my opinion that once it's been set aside for rural, it should stay in a fund for rural to be used the next year. it should stay in a fund for rural to be used the next year. And then there'll be more people to use it, to say that there will never be enough to apply for it. I don't think that's even accurate.
Well, just like last year, Richmond.
Mm-hmm.
We used county part. I mean, there's always, I've never seen it when everything gets funded. And I've been here quite a while. And what is considered rural? Does that go clear to Melville now that that road's developed the whole time? And clear to Smithfield? And what's considered, where's the dividing part? I see Providence didn't get funded.
I probably might call Jeff back up on that because it's a specific map and it's strategically tied.
Yeah, I mean...
Can you explain that real quick to help out on?
The rural boundary is defined by the Census Bureau. They designate what they call Logan urbanized area. And so it is from, Smithfield to the north is in the urban area and Wellsville and Hiram to the south and then kind of a rough boundary in between. I think it goes out to 16th West. So it's a fairly rough boundary, but Wellsville's an urban area in the urban boundary.
Thank you.
That's set by the Census Bureau, so it could change even with this 2020 census.
You know, I was visiting with the people over in Wellsville a year ago and they said they gave up applying because they never got nothing, you know? And so don't tell me that there isn't a need for it. It's just that they've given up on it.
Well, Wellsville isn't rural.
Yeah, they went.
So they're competing.
You just said they were rural.
No, no, that's rural.
Yeah, urban. So Wellsville, I think this is actually a very positive highlight. One of the issues that we face just countywide is all of our cities are growing differently. We have different issues, different needs. And even for our own town in our own area, I found myself with the county on a bunch of different things and with it and then things that, for what I'm seeing and viewing, it's different. And so to get every one of these cities and county in one room saying, hey, we want the money, we want the money, trying to work that, I actually have been very impressed with the process. This year is a perfect example. If you looked at the funds that were received, Logan, Nibley, and Smithfield received full funding on the rankings. So Logan was ranked number one. It's basically to try to get another pass-through road on Logan that we know could be used. This is a phased project. It's massive. It takes a large sum. What happened was Wellsville has only applied in the years that they've been part of COG. They've only applied once. So this was the second application that's ever been submitted by Wellsville, recognizing they have to compete with the larger areas. So it is a project. Their funding was received about half, so they didn't receive all the funding. One of the things that I felt was important to highlight with this group where all of us are together, Logan called shortly after the rankings, when it was done, and requested and talked about the option of actually taking some of their funds and funding all of Wellsville and using some of their own personal city funds to help offset that so that Wellsville, knowing they had never received COG funding, could receive 100% of their funding. I credit that to just the group in general, but also being able to work together and recognize the better of our county and the area to utilize that. Because Logan didn't have to do that. They won the tally fair and square. Everybody agreed that's where the source should come. So I think that's a good highlight of how that breaks down and works. And I've had multiple conversations. So last year, there were some rural areas that were a bit frustrated because they didn't get funded. So I went to each one of those, because I'm rural, and I said, it's very simple. Most likely, with how things roll, the most you'll have to apply is maybe two to three years and your project can work. It can go through. So I asked every one of them to apply. And the ones that did, 100% applied, but not all of them did. Some of them said, I'm not doing it. Sorry. I'm frustrated I didn't get in this time. Should have.
Yeah, the occasion hasn't changed from really one year to another, does it?
They probably could have just changed the date and submitted the same thing and it would have been a 100% guarantee. And I thought the same too. It's not always perfect, as all of us recognize when we're working together with the large one. I do believe that what's been put together over the years is better, but I do like the idea of having input. As you guys saw last year, your input directly affected us going back to the table and relooking things, working things at the particular scenario, working with Providence, redoing things and coming back so that we could accomplish things that everybody was somewhat comfortable with. Not perfect, but working together. And so I would request, unless there's any further questions.
I've got one more. Where's Phase One on Logan's? Maybe there was a map that came with it, but I couldn't find it if there was.
The first west corridor.
First corridor, Phase One. Is that?
That was for right away.
Yeah.
Just to purchase out this way?
Yeah, they secured funding, I think, two years ago for just purchasing right away. So this is Phase Two of that.
Oh, I thought you said Phase One, whatever. Okay, but it's for...
Yeah.
Thank you. And there will be an additional one that will be coming up. And Logan, once again, brought this up in the COG meeting. Okay, we know we're going to come back and request another three to four million dollars out of the potential four to six. It could be 70 to 80% of the available funds. They then asked the COG, are there options that would work the best for COG? Would it be best to hold off a year and let other cities participate in funds? And then we apply again, seeing if we can allow other people to work in situations? That's the part that I hope the county council recognizes is the dialogue that we do have is a, I feel it's a very constructive dialogue and beneficial.
Yeah, my question was just concerning, they have a development tax deferral, whatever, out on that end. And I wondered if this road was in that area.
Yeah, they accommodated the corridor through that development. They planned that corridor.
So those rightaways are within that development?
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Appreciate your input.
With all of that, I would like to recommend the full funding to the Cache County Council for round 2020, round of funding for COG.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is an initial proposal for consideration of action. We can waive the rules and act on it right now or put it off?
We can put it off. It'll be clear in January.
Yeah. So...
And Jeff needs something to do.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we waive the rules and approve the 2020 COG funding recommendations.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It's now time for our first public hearing. This is for Ordinance 2020-13, a request to rezon 25.55 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural RU-2 zone located in an existing subdivision at 65 East, 600 South in Petersboro. And this is now a public hearing and we'll invite anyone who'd like to speak to come to the podium. Please state your name and share with us what your thoughts are.
Can I take this down? I'm super castrated.
Yes, you can.
I can't breathe and I'm so nervous.
Take a breath.
Okay, so my name is Jennifer Felton and I get incredibly nervous, okay? So I'm basically just going to read to you guys, or you guys, or everyone. Okay. First though, I'm wondering, did everybody receive a packet? They should have received a packet. If not, it's okay. I do have them all here just as a backup, but...
Uh, no. I don't think any of us received a packet.
It's okay if I pass it out?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we did. It's the Willow Creek rezon proposal.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, okay, so we did.
We all have. It's a funny picture on the front.
I'm going to give you an extra little map, just so, this is from the county. It just kind of gives you a visibility.
And we do have this map as well.
Oh, you have this as well? Okay.
We do, yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for being so prepared.
Yep.
Okay, so you guys have that. Awesome.
All right.
Okay, so now I'm just going to read. Sorry, my dad is actually the one that was going to be here. He lives in North Carolina though and is at risk and didn't want to fly. So I am going to be reading to you guys. Okay, I'm fine. Okay. My name is Jennifer Felton. I submitted the request to rezon the Willow Creek subdivision on behalf of my family. The objective this evening is to present information to the council that was not available to the Planning and Zoning Commission. My hope is to address the concerns that the commission may have had when they made their recommendation. That information should have been received by you prior to this meeting in your packet. I did not see the notice from the county and did not attend the public meeting that was held by Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss the proposed rezoning. I really don't know why. I'm going to blame it on COVID. I am thankful to the council for the opportunity this evening to present the information I would have presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. My hope is that as the council has presented with the information, you will see that the request to rezon the Willow Creek subdivision to RU-2 will best meet the land use in the area as well as the desires of the property owners in the area. That the request to rezon to RU-2 will be approved or at minimum returned to Planning and Zoning Commission, allowing them to reevaluate the additional information. Okay. Okay, so the objectives for tonight, or for my little speech, develop the remaining undeveloped portion in a manner that is consistent with surrounding homes. And you can note the plot of subdivision and surrounding properties so you guys can kind of have something to compare what we're proposing. To develop the land to fit its best use, develop the land in a manner that aligns with the expressed desires of adjacent property owners. You can see that they've had their signatures on the agreement to amend Willow Creek subdivision. That is part of the packet. Okay. Options. I don't know why. I'm just totally shaking. Okay. Develop within Mendon City was an option. So city water needs to be brought out to the property. The barrier to this is cost is prohibitive. Prohibitive. And at present, city is not available. Laurel, do you want to get up here and read this? And city is not available, not, can I start over? Okay, develop within Mendon City. City water would need to be brought out to the property. The barrier to this is the cost prohibits this action and at present, the city is not able to provide adequate pressure. You can note from the Mendon City Mayor Ed Boust and Mendon City Civil Engineer Eric Durstil, that's the information backing that. Okay, anyways, cost of infrastructure would dictate higher density of, oh my gosh, I'm failing at this. Okay. B, cost of infrastructure would dictate higher density of housing. So those were kind of the two things that were proposed was to possibly annex into Mendon City. Those were the two reasons that that is not really the best option that we would like to go with is because of the water, the cost of the water, not having pressure for the water. And then also, the cost to bring that water out, which there isn't any pressure anyways, would require that we do a higher density of housing, which is just against what all of my neighbors and I would prefer. Anyways, develop within Cache County, this is another option. This is the preferred option for us anyways. Water needed for additional homes would come from water rights historically used in the area. As you will see in your packet, there is a note for water right details for 25-11311. This should minimize impact on the surrounding homes. B, public electric and gas for additional homes are currently on the property. C, consistent with development of adjacent properties and in line with the wishes of adjacent property owners. The number of proposed new lots will be limited to four. Each lot will be approximately three acres. This aligns with Cache County's RU-2 zoning guidelines. That is, it is adjacent to a city's boundaries yet in the county. Addressing concerns noted by Cache County Planning and Zoning Commission. Please note from November 5, 2020, the minutes between 46 and minutes 42. Commission felt that annexation into Mendon City would be easier. As noted above, inability to provide water to the property. Two, size of development would allow for 12 homes. It was stated that a handful of additional homes would be okay, but that 12 was a larger number than the council felt comfortable with. Additional properties will be limited to four. To date, there are five homes currently in that subdivision. Only 12 acres remain undeveloped. This would allow for a maximum of six additional homes. But with the agreement and the amendment, sorry, the agreement to amend Willow Creek restricts this to four. I think everyone would have a better understanding if I, I'm not sure if everyone else would like to talk or how much minutes we have, but if I could play four to six minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think we'd have a better understanding of kind of where the recommendations were and where some of the misinformation may have occurred.
I think we all have the minutes of the planning and zoning meeting and I presume have reviewed those as a council. Any questions any of you have about what the planning commission finding, what their findings were or what their reasoning was? I think we're okay on that. Yeah.
What do I do now? I don't know.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Not particularly. If we're all, I'm hoping that I addressed the concerns from the planning and zoning meeting because I do, I listened to the minutes as well. And they were saying they would approve it, but felt it may be better for Mendon. And so I'm hoping that everybody, from what I read, can see it did address every one of the concerns. There was actually one I wanted to note that's not on here is that one of the concerns from an actual private resident was that they didn't really want or their thought was that septic tanks could have an impact on the land. But whether if we annexed into Mendon City, they do not have plumbing, so there would be actually more septic tanks than if we could just get this rezoned through the county.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know.
All right.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else who would like to talk about this? Your hand was up. We'd invite you to come forward to the microphone, state your name. We need you to use the microphone so that we can record what you say.
I just wanted you to get up and get it out of the way fast. Oh, sorry. Tyler Jacobson. I live in the area. We were notified of the announcement. Does that always echo? Sorry. The planning commission spoke at that. What I feel like, I provided an email earlier to the council and if you've got it and read over it, I'll just summarize. If not, I'll just like to go over that. Kind of three key points that I felt that needed to be brought up and that we covered. The other type of the meeting is that the parcel use status, which is in the documentation, states that the subject properties are legal and comprise the Willow Creek subdivision. The Willow Creek subdivision was approved through the conditional use permit process as a five-lot subdivision with a remainder parcel by county council in April 1996. One of the conditions of the approval that was included on the record, subdivision plat as noted in number five, these lots cannot be divided further with a total of 25.55 acres in the subdivision. The 1996 approval allowed for a density of one lot for every five acres. Under the current density requirements of the agricultural A-10 zone, the maximum number of lots that could be developed today on 25.55 acres is two. of lots that could be developed today on 25.55 acres is two lots. The remaining areas that's left that's not already been subdivided. I would like to request that the council preserve the conditions of the property as set forth by the council in the April 1996 to allow two additional lots on the property. Also, in the accordance with the sensitive areas, which is outlined in the Cache County 17.18, the purpose of this sensitive area is to provide a mechanism for the protection of those areas of Cache County which are determined to be environmentally sensitive or that may pose a potential threat or danger to development. This chapter is intended to protect the general health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Cache County, minimize public and private property damage, and emergency taxes assistance, provide an awareness of and mitigation strategies for development within sensitive areas, and provide a mechanism to determine acreage for development within the Cache County. I believe the property falls into the section C of the definitions of this Sensitive Area Act, or I believe it's an act. The floodplain, floodway, and/or areas impacted by man-made water conservants. Systems A, hydraulic report, including information on groundwater levels, natural and man-made, drainage channels and systems, channels and based floodplain elevations, which the property has floodplain running through it. Having lived in the area when flooding has taken place, there is a real possibility of property damage, and some of the new houses could be hit in the flood area, the new proposed flood area. The area would be more suitable to just the two additional lots. In addition, there is a real concern about groundwater. My property well has been replaced multiple times, and most recently two years ago, due to minerals in the water causing buildup. Our neighbors have had wells dry up, wells created, and new wells created. From the beginning, there is evidence of lower, from the beginning, there's evidence of lower quantities of groundwater in the area. Others can speak to their situations that are here. In fact, the additional wells will put a strain on water. We ask you to please protect the existing rights of current landowners and not cause additional problems or changes to the required requirements in the future. And we want to, we'd want to know who would bear the burden for any damage that was caused by the water drying up. And point three, the planning commission's already conclusion, the area does not have sufficient public utilities to support a higher density development at this location and was recommended for denial. I know at the meeting, there was a question about septic tanks as well, again pointing to support of the 1996 land use and for two additional houses in the current subdivision. That information is accurate, is to the best of my knowledge in that, I know we've, I personally, I feel like, you know, if we have the difference between what was set out in the 1996 and the request of, we'd be, I personally would be fine with three. And those are my comments and requests to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before you stand up, let's see if there's someone else who would like to address this. Okay, we invite you to come up and, oh, here's somebody coming again also. Just one second. Please state your name.
Mary Burbank. Anything else I need to state?
No. Just what's on your mind, I guess.
I apologize that I'm not more prepared for this. We actually found out about this meeting late tonight, but I do would like to express some concerns that our family, we just moved into the area a year and a half ago. The pulleys next to us and then the clamps just above us, all and from that area. These are some things that would affect if this goes through and passes. We have concerns about the public hearing well water. Before Mr. Olson purchased the property, the Stylers had to dig a new well due to insufficient water. The pulleys had to dig a second well because theirs ran dry. The Klomp family had their well run dry this summer. We are concerned that four more houses come in, it may deplete the water that we have now. There's also the floodplain issue. We have all been flooded since we have lived here, including the home Mr. Olson's daughter lived in. It has caused quite a bit of damage to all of the homes below the canal. And I think Tyler spoke very well to this, other concerns about who would bear the burden if these homes flooded and the damage that it would cause. There's also, the Willow Creek subdivision had a pre-property allowance mandated in 1970 regarding the use of this land. The Willow Creek subdivision has already divided to the max amount of homes. If a conditional use is approved for this, will the owners in the subdivision be able to get an additional conditional use to the subdivide our property as well? The other concern is that this is being addressed in a county council here in Cache County and where it affects so many people that are rural and Mendon residents. We're wondering if it would be possible to move this back to the Mendon council.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Thank you.
Name, please.
Laurel Bills.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, actually Eugene Olson, who owns this property, is on Zoom. I'm wondering if he would have permission just to visit with you on a Zoom call, answer questions you have?
That would be fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jean, can you hear me? Jean, can you hear me? Let's see, how come I don't have him on here? Do you?
I don't know how this works, but why she's doing that? I could address some of.
Jean, are you on there?
Wait one minute here.
Seems that we're having some issues, network issues. I'm sorry, I had him on just a moment.
That's my middle name.
A moment ago. Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's chopping. What network are you on right here? Now it's over to there. That little.
Click on that one.
No, you're on the guest network. You should be okay. Can he not hear you?
Can you hear me, Jean?
Okay. Sound device. Click on that little up arrow. Nope, not, yep. Speaker, turn your speakers up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jean?
Can I hear me?
Yes, they can hear you now and you're addressing the council.
Good, thank you. And I don't know if you can see me, but here I am. Wish I could be there, but North Carolina's a long ways away. Comments I had, I appreciate the input from everyone. And one thing I noticed is I read through the minutes of the meeting from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they really don't have the discussion from the members of the commission. So I would encourage everyone to at least listen to minutes 44 through 52. You really would hear the discussion of the commission's concerns, and that's what we tried to address today. Also, I've heard some comments about water. If you read through it, we'll show that, or we can see that the water that was used previously by the dairy is more than what four homes would use. So the four homes we're asking for will not be any additional water use than what has been historically used there. And I guess, I could ask if the council has any questions of me that I could answer? If the council has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Olson?
Was it addressed that they're just requesting that there would just be the four homes, right? On the remaining 12 acres, there's just four homes? That there wouldn't be even, yeah, there wouldn't be more?
Okay.
RU2 would limit it to four.
Would limit it to four, yes. And then just that it wasn't practical to annex it into Mendon because of the cost expense issues? Did you want to discuss that one?
Well, that's, the annexation into Mendon is up to Mendon.
Okay.
And so that's not something that the council can address this evening. But that's, the application would have to come from the property owner, and it would have to go to Mendon as a annexation request.
Sorry, it's, the thing is delayed. So he's going to respond to you. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, what's that question?
He was just explaining that it's got to go before Mendon.
Yes, what's that question?
He was just explaining that it's got to go before Mendon.
Yes, what's that question?
Okay, let's make sure he's finished.
You said, so Jennifer, do you mind just handling those comments? But thank you for letting me discuss because we've addressed Mendon and talked to the mayor, Ed Buist, and it's cost prohibitive. In the email that you see there, you'll see that Mendon City has said that we will have to bring the water to the property. Right now, that is over 5,000 feet at a cost of around $300,000. And even then, it would not have adequate pressure at this time to supply homes. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission really felt that we met all the criteria for the RU2, but that we annexed into Mendon, where we find that cost-wise and economically, it's not feasible because it's over 300,000 that we would have to spend to bring the water to the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
My question is, some of the other residents in the area have said that their wells have gone dry this summer, and I wonder if this property has ever experienced its well going dry or having problems with water.
Did you hear that question, Jean?
It's about water or?
The wells going dry?
Well, it, so.
There was a concern.
This is just more for, I checked with the Division of Water Rights. The water right that was used in the area that has higher priority, is the water that was being used for, the dairy that was there at the time the homes were built, the dairy has stops, is not being used. Water that historically was used in the area would be used for the homes. So we're not increasing the established water right. We actually have a priority, our water right has a priority to any of the homes there. So I understand the concerns, but it should not really be any different than when the dairy was running. So.
Did I answer your question?
Appreciate your time. And let Jennifer, just any more questions? Any questions you have?
All right. No more questions?
No more questions.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Before you stand up, let me read this letter. I was presented a letter by Mrs. Pulley, I guess, and she wanted to make a comment at the public hearing, but due to a health issue was not able to be here. And let me just read this. She said, "We have some concerns about this public hearing well water. Before Mr. Olson purchased this property, the Stylers had to dig a new well due to insufficient water. We had to dig a second well because ours ran dry. The Klomp family had their well run dry this summer. We are concerned that when four more houses come in, it may deplete the water that we have now." Floodplain, "We have all been flooded since we have lived here, including the home where Mr. Olson's daughter lived. It caused quite a bit of damage to all the homes below the canal." Willow Creek subdivision, "There was a pre-property allowance mandated in 1970 regarding the use of this land. Willow Creek subdivision has already divided to the maximum amount of homes. If a conditional use is approved for this, will the other owners in this subdivision be able to get a conditional use to subdivide our property if the need occurs?" So those were her comments.
I can't answer any questions, if that's okay?
Counsel, you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should wait until the gentleman back there that's got his hand up.
Yep.
That was his?
Yeah, that one, he brought.
He brought that, that's you?
That was, did you have anything else to add besides the letter?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Bruce Kidman. I have lived there before there was even other homes built. And they talk about the water down at the dairy. Gene Olson has never used that water since he has lived there. That dairy has, and I don't know how long that's been, 20 years? I have no idea. But that water has never been used for culinary purposes. So I know that for a fact. And all of us water, you know, like you say, I know Pulley's water, it wasn't this year it went bad. It was two years ago that their water went down. And the problem with groundwater is you never know which way it's coming from. And everybody assumes, okay, it's coming from the mountains down, but you never know. And so I'd like to say that. Another thing I wonder is nobody was notified of this meeting. How did it even get on the agenda? I'm sorry. I don't know. I know, we came over to the last meeting with planning and zoning, it was denied 5 to 1 on November the 5th. So what I don't know is how come nobody was notified about this and which, you know, I tried to go through different processes for, and there was always notifications sent out. So I don't know what's going on, you know, I really don't. And for all it wants this to come up, it's a complete surprise to me and everybody else that is associated or living around there, and there is a lot of people that didn't even, that doesn't know yet, that I'm sure would like to come and voice their opinion on it because water has, water has been a big problem, a big problem. At the planning and zoning meeting, Mendon City didn't even show up. There was no comment from Mendon City. But Ron Campbell, who is on the Mendon City Council, he he made a motion apparently to the Cache County Council to recommend denial, and this was on November 5th. So, there again. I don't understand what's going on. And I would like to voice my opinion that I don't think it's proper and, you know, there are just too many, too many issues.
Thank you, Bruce.
That's probably about the size of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the water rights piece? So there's an, there was a dairy. This is zoned ag, so there could be a dairy yet again if you wanted to. And that dairy would have preferential water rights. So instead of subdivide, and you can throw some cows on there, and get that water going to the dairy as it is currently constituted, is that correct?
But having that water right, they have a prior water right. The other people have a water right also.
Right.
The state just says, you have a water right, if your well goes dry, dig it deeper. We're not saying where you're going to get it. The question is fairness or not, but they all have a water right. One is before the other. The state just interprets it to say, you have a water right, if your well went dry, drill it deeper.
We had this problem out in College Ward where we had Nibley City drilling well after well after well. And back in 1900, and the home that my dad lived in had an Artesian flow, good water. And now the water's down 20 feet. And so we went to the, we went to the state when Evan Olson was on the, was a representative. We went down there and spent quite a little bit of time down there in the state and proposed to them that we had a prior right, you know, when you get to 1900 comparing to 2000, there's a big difference in water right. And when it was all said and done, when everything was figured, it's just like John White said, all the state does. all the state does is you've got a water right and you got a right to go after it. And in the end, whoever's got the most money, can drill the deepest, gets the water. And that's as much as you can expect the state to do for you. And, and so I think when we get talking about rider, water rights and that, it's pretty issue if, if you're gonna get water. But the other thing to remember is if the dairy had water rights there, they were animal watering rights. And when you convert it to well water, there's a calculator there that you have to do a division and whatnot. But there is still, you can take animal water and turn it into human water, but there will be a mall, a division factor on it.
I think it's 13 cows per house.
15 cows per house or something? You know more than... Anyway, that's where we're sitting with that. And so the subdivision does have a right for water, you know, it, it does. And so, you know, you feel bad when these residents that's got a prior right are told, well, it's too bad, you know, if that dries up your well, you'll just have to drill another one. And we're already hearing that they're having to have that problem. But anyway, water, as a council, we don't deal with water rights, so let's not even think about that. That'd be up to the state to decide what they wanna do. We as a council are only here to decide if it needs to be switched from a 10-acre agricultural property to a 2-acre, 2 acre, 2 acre, 2 acre lots for a house.
It's, it's just a density issue.
Yeah.
If they say they only want one, we rezone it for R2, there's that many acres, we're just rezoning it. We're not saying, so...
If it wants to get zoned to R2, they can build that many homes there, there's no question. Even if they say they're not going to. That's, that's a challenge with zoning. Once you get zoned into a certain zoning level, then build a home and then they've got an option to go in for a building permit for the other 2-acre lots and 2-acre lots and 2-acre lots. That's, that's what we're here to decide tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this? Yes, please come forward.
My name's Ethan Poppleton, I live at 920 North 6400 West in Petersburg. I really wasn't at this meeting for this agenda item, but I thought I might stand up and give you guys some information that I found out since I bought my house there two and a half years ago. I lived in Menden before that for about 12 years. I, my home sits between the Harmon's home and the Durpy's home. The Durpy have a well that's 600 feet deep, and I swear it's tapped into Niagara Falls, it has plenty water. My well is about 150 feet deep and I run out of water every summer, every time I start watering my sprinklers. Harmon's have a 300-foot well and they have great water. So, I'm not for or against this subdivision, I just want the council to know that not all well drillers are equal and not all wells are drilled equal. If you talk to one driller who I claim to be about the best around, he'll find you water wherever you want. But others have lost their license two or three times. And so, I don't know who's drilling the wells that are running out of water, including mine. I know who drilled my well, I won't hire them to re-drill it. But as far as water goes, that's something to take into consideration. I see this parcel as something that might be good for Cache County. The county and all of the state is about 40,000 units behind in growth. So to deny something that looks like a perfect parcel for a few homes that match the area, and put the risk on the homeowners to hire a well driller to drill the well properly, seems like the right thing to do. Like I say, I'm not for or against it, I wasn't here for this agenda item, but that's, as a neighbor, it seems logical, so...
Okay, thank you. All right, one more comment, we'll take one more comment if someone wants, would like to, to say something. Yes?
So I also spent basically my entire life in Petersburg, in this area. And I'm glad to see you, Bruce, been a little while. And I'm not trying to create conflict here. But, and I'm not sure where Bruce is getting his information because I do have a printout from, from, from where people... I'm sorry, I wish I was Gene, but you go somewhere and you can prove water use through Utah Division of Water Rights. And I was there growing up herding cows, and we definitely used the water. And I also live and own, I temporarily don't live there right now, I've been going through some personal things. I do plan on moving back. But I live in that home, have lived in that home next to the dairy since I was a freshman in college and have never had an issue with water. And I use my home water and my well water to water two and a half acres. Because I can't do this screwy thingy. No, I'm gonna take that back, I don't water the back little half part, so I'm gonna be conservative and go with an acre and a half. I, I know the Pulleys, I actually know everyone in this area. And I do understand everyone's concerns about these water rights and your wells, I do. The Pulleys honestly haven't had any problems since they dug a new well. I don't know if it's because of the quality of the first well or not. I do know legally, we could just put more cows. And we could use all of the water rights, which is equivalent to 12 homes. This is why 12 homes has come up. The number of 12 homes, this is not, like, we get to build, there's no 12 thing anywhere. The 12-home thing comes up because cows, blah, 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 the water that was used is equivalent to what the government water rights give you for a home and landscape. So that's where this 12 homes come up. We personally don't want it annexed into Menden because it does cost more money. Could we do that in a year legally? Yes. I've, I mean, I've been through Menden City Council, I've been talking, I've been doing this for two years. And so if this does not get approved, I imagine Gene will probably wanna wait another year 'cause he doesn't want a subdivision. He would like four acres, four lots. I'm supposed to get one of those lots to build my home, he would like to keep it for family. However, if that's not an option anymore, he is a businessman at heart. And I imagine eventually if he keeps hitting a wall here, he will put the money into taking the water out there. And he'll just have to build a bunch of homes to make up for the cost of the water, and I don't want that either, sorry. That's all I have to say. I think, you know, we've, I don't know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I think you guys will do whatever you do.
Thank you. All right.
Good to hear from our planner.
Well, let's close the public hearing first before we get in.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that, oh, another?
Yeah, I'm Eric Burbank, and I've talked to you. And I just, I need clarification, are we talking four homes, are we talking seven homes, are we talking? Because I keep hearing this different, if we rezone it, we can do this with it, but we're only gonna do four homes. Because when we talked about that, we were, we were on board with that. Four homes is better than what could possibly happen. Now all we, I just need clarification, is that where we're still at? Or just now we're hearing with the possibility of two more, or with 12, or a subdivision, so...
The only one that can clarify that is that fellow right there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Chris, would you like to, uh, answer some questions that might clarify things for the council?
I guess, Chris, the first thing I wanna know, do we, we have these things come before the council? We don't, we don't notify property owners, we do in planning and zoning do, but we don't when it comes to this meeting, I don't think.
So we have, that's a good, good question on that. And for those who haven't participated in these activities before, when it goes to the planning commission, we send out a notice within 300 feet of the property. So that is the notice you get, and it says on that, this is the only notice you'll receive. From that point on, it's up to the responsible property owner to follow that through the process. So we also provide notice in the paper, we provide it online, we provide it through the public notice website. So there's three other places besides physically here that that notice is provided. It is not mailed directly to their house for the council meeting.
Plus, at that zoning meeting, you always tell them this will go before the council at this meeting.
It doesn't always specify it there, at the end of the meeting, we don't always clarify that, no. But we have, we have.
The challenge is, is some of these things take quite a while, and there can be quite a bit of time between when it comes before planning and zoning and when it finally comes up to us. And so, you know, you kinda feel bad, but it is responsibility of the citizen after it's, you know, it's the application that's been in to be, to be valiant in what they do. And I, I've been left out before too and feel bad, but that's the way it is.
And it, it is a tough feeling, I agree, that that feeling, you don't want to be, feel like somebody's going around your back or excluding you. I agree. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else to say with regard to that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Chris?
Any feedback or?
Chris, I have a question for you that kinda confuses me. So, the entire subdivision, the proposal is to rezone the entire subdivision, which is the 25 acres, 25 and some change. But really, they only wanna build on the 12 acres, correct? So when they, so this latest proposal to take it down to four houses was not something that the planning commission considered or saw?
Correct. Just the rezone is all that was discussed or considered.
Well, and that's how we really have any purview over also is...
Right, so if we approved it, they could still build the larger number because it, the zoning would go off the 25 rather than the 12?
Correct.
Question, Chris?
Part, part of this challenge is there's a full subdivision trying to account for multiple development rights. And so while they have that potential, they don't own all that property. So they have the potential to add so many more lots, they could have a maximum of 12 homes in that subdivision under the current acreage that's available. So what I find interesting also is, the applicant was required to get the sign-off from all the property owners before they could even apply. So they've accomplished that, and it sounds like there's some lack of clarity as to what's occurring. Because most of the people we've heard from tonight are those same property owners, with some exception. And so I think there's some confusion about what's being proposed, which really points back to your question, is what's the distinction between 12 homes and four? And really what it is, is the rezone allows that maximum. And that decision is made just with the rezone, if they only wanna do four, that's up to them. If they wanna change their mind to do six, that's a whole different matter. It could occur. But they get the maximum of the, if they, if you rezone it to RU2.
Is there a vehicle in our zoning that, a person that is, wants to rezone 24 acres, can they come in and request only four acres and make a binding? Because the only way I understand it is they're in the 10-acre, the 5-acre, the 2-acre, and they've applied for the 2-acre, but they don't want that many. And I'm guessing from what I'm seeing from the faces of the people that they've went around and done due diligence at four lots, and then all of a sudden, they're being told that there's 12. And right now, if we approve it the way it is, it's 12 lots. And yet, they're already saying we only want four, but I don't know if there's a vehicle in our county planning and zoning where you can take 24 acres and say only four lots. That might be more palatable, but I guess the question is, is that possible through a legal description that you got that many acres, but you only request four lots?
Not at the rezone level that I'm aware of, unless there's a different zone.
They're requesting RU2.
Correct.
They did not request an RU5.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, their request basically is what puts them to what, you know, would then if it's passed?
It would be, it would be a new zone.
Go in and say, well, we're gonna change your request. No, we don't.
Yeah, we don't really, we're discussing, that's not a good question I made, I just wondered if you could do it.
It's just a density.
You could, but you'd have to add, create a new zone that someone could apply to.
We don't currently have an RU5 zone.
We do have an RU5 zone, but if they were to pursue an RU5 zone, that doesn't give them any additional lots.
Oh.
So the RU2 is why they pursued the RU2, because that allows the additional lots, more than they need arguably, but not what they've committed to.
Well, if they did an RU5 on the 25 acres, would that give them four lots?
They already have five lots.
Oh, they already have?
Five, four, I think it's five.
Okay.
Yep. Back in the day when they did the subdivisions, they were allowed to develop a single parcel and have up to five buildable lots on a 1970 parcel. And so that's how that was approved. If it were to come through now, they'd get two in the A10 zone.
What's the story with the restriction that they couldn't be subdivided anymore?
Most subdivisions have that on their plat. When they, when, when we've done subdivisions throughout the years, they'll divide up a primary parcel, a parent parcel, into buildable lots and usually an agricultural remainder, open space. And they'll put a restriction on that open spacer, ag remainder parcel that says not eligible for development. Now, that doesn't mean they can't come back in a year or six months and amend that plat and take that note off and add for additional lots. You can always amend those plats.
That's exactly, that's exactly what's being done right now.
That seems to be what happens.
Yep, that's legal and it happens all the time.
So this would be a complete rezone, no conditional use permit required?
Right. The county council used to use conditional use permits for their land use actions, that's changed. So this rezone would allow them to come back and request a subdivision to further subdivide that property and amend that sub, previous subdivision plat. No CUP required.
But if it came before, you know, to, to that next step, could then, we wouldn't have any legislative way to disprove more than, more than four lots?
No.
So if we rezone it, they have 12 regardless?
As long as they meet the requirements, we have to approve it. That's the law.
If this is rezoned right now, they have an option for 12 lots. And there's not, you know, they, they can come in and make all of the...
Seven more.
Make, make all of the, all the more, you know, qualify, I guess what I'm trying to say, they can come in and qualify for building permit and they cannot be denied because it's been zoned for that.
Yeah, they'll have some conditions to meet, like you see with most of these with road improvements. They've talked about some of the water challenges, they'll have to drill some wells, the whole thing that comes with the developing of property. So they've got the five parcels now, they could, or five lots, they could potentially have up to seven additional if there was room, if they can have the 90 feet of frontage along the road, which I don't think is, I can't recall if there's space for 90 feet of frontage for that many lots. And then it's gonna come down to who's gonna claim the right for those lots because the one owner doesn't own all those development potential pieces. Oh, I think there's six owners in this subdivision.
Six different owners.
See, I think, Chris... At least for me, as I talk through this, the challenge is, right, we need developable, developable lots. We have got issues with housing, so you need to be able to greenlight some stuff. From everybody I've heard, other than there's some issues with, with water out there in general that are gonna exist whether you build the four additional lots or not, there, it's there. But it's probably not an unsolvable issue. Four lots, nobody has heartburn with. Really, too much heartburn. And so that would be kind of an easy thing to say, hey, we're gonna give you four lots, build them, have fun. But with the tools we've been given, we gotta blunt force instrument, we need to use it surgically, which is hard to do, because you get 12 lots when you only need four. But if we don't do anything, the housing issue keeps being exacerbated. And at some point in time, you have to step out and say, hey, we're gonna trust you to do something good. Maybe get burned.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree. I think, you know, in the past, we've kinda gone along with what the, what the borderline community wants. I think, you know, they're gonna use all the roads in Menden, all the parks in Menden, everything Menden has to offer. We have a letter from Menden City saying they can, they feel they can supply water now. Prior, two years ago, they said they couldn't. But we have one from Buyst and from the council members saying, we think we can do... from the council members saying, we think we can do that now. And, you know, we went along with all the development should happen with, you know, that was the plan years ago by the community in which it's around. And I think if you, you're just saying, I think we're saying to heck with the community. It's cheaper for them to build out here, and we don't care what the community thinks. I don't think that's right. I've been a mayor, and I hated that when they built on my boundaries, because we furnished all the infrastructure and everything just about, and you get no tax revenue.
In a matter of time, I think we should either table this, or we should, I would even make a motion that we deny it because of the fact that we haven't got any real vehicle to do anything more than approve a 12 lot subdivision.
Well, we're, we're in the public hearing phase right now. We have another public hearing to discuss. That, that will move down into our initial proposals for consideration of action.
We go out of the public hearing, and so now we're discussing this among council members, right?
Yeah, on this particular item, but we still have another public hearing to.
Okay, you want to put it off until we discuss?
Till we, yeah, we've got people that have waited here now for 45 minutes.
Initial consideration still, if you want to discuss it later.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe one more point of clarification while, while Chris is there. Explain, you know, one guy, he was a little upset at the planning meeting, and they thought it was decided. Would you explain to him just the difference why it's here?
Sure. So the planning commission is identified as a recommending body for the county legislative body, which is the county council. So when it goes to the planning commission, they review the county land use code, they review what the general overarching intent is of the council, and try to apply that to a rezone request. So when they do that, they try to take those things into consideration. They review the input from the city at the time, and any input from the council from previous times, and then make a recommendation and forward that, forward that on. Once it comes to the council, the council will then consider, they don't have to have a whole, a public hearing, but they do, to get some more, some clear and in-person feedback on these specific items. And so they consider those items, and then they have the power to act to approve or deny that, because we're actually changing the ordinance by changing the zoning map. That's why it has to come here.
Yeah, I, I didn't think that. That's why, it goes to the planning, but they, all they do is recommend. Nothing happens, or this is the only body that can change.
It gets appealed up to us, and we make the final decision on it. So that's why we like input.
One quick point, John, just to ask a question. So, or Chris too, and maybe Mendon City's not here. But if Mendon City annexed this land to then do it, does every resident of Mendon City have to hook up to their water line, or are there Mendon City residents that are on wells?
I think if you're on a well, you can't be forced to.
Can you force someone to come on, or could, could you annex properties Mendon City and then say, well, you're in Mendon City limits, but we're not going to provide you culinary water. You can drill a well.
It, it does depend on the city.
Yeah, most people have benefit of being in the city's water.
And, and some cities will require, as you go to build, they may come in and say, okay.
You have to.
You have to turn your water right over to us, so that we can develop it to have enough water for you and whoever else may be.
But that's not a foregone, we'd have to.
That's, that's Mendon City's, that's whatever is in their process of a?
Correct.
A building.
I think once Mendon City annexes it, then they can do with it what they want.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we may have had some people here waiting to hear the next public hearing. It was scheduled for 5:45, so we're, we're a bit over time, and I apologize. But this is for ordinance 2020-14, an ordinance to repeal resolution 2015-20, and amend the county manual of roadway design and construction standards.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there was an email sent out to the council that the planning commission actually has to have a 10-day notice prior to their approval for this, which means that they will have to hear this ordinance in their January meeting. So we cannot hear that tonight. We won't, or we won't be able to hold that public hearing tonight.
I missed that, I didn't see that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for those of you who are here to, to provide input on this ordinance. I guess we won't be hearing this until January, because planning commission has not had an opportunity yet to, to consider it.
Was there anyone here that was staying for that?
I know one.
Yeah.
They'll have a public hearing on the first Thursday in January. I think that might be the seventh.
The planning commission will?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, with that, then, we've completed our public hearings. We have two pending action items, ordinance 2020-16, providing for salaries for members of the Cache County Council for 2021. And I guess we need to do something with that so that we can approve the budget.
Would it be bad for us to just jump ahead, and if we're going to decide what to do on, as these people are waiting for, you know, for a decision on, you know, on the pending action, or the initial action, or the initial proposal that we just talked about?
We, we can do that. This is initial proposal.
So that if they want to leave, I mean, I know budgets are really exciting.
They should be. Okay, let's, that's a good suggestion. Let's, let's move ahead, then, to initial proposals for consideration of action, and start with 12A, ordinance 2020-13, request to rezone 25.55 acres from ag A-10 zone to rural RU2 zone located in an existing subdivision at 65 East, 600 South Petersburg. Okay, I'll, Chris is here at the, at the podium.
I have one more piece to add.
Okay.
The last piece on this, that's, as this went to the planning commission, they do take to heart the comments from the city very seriously. And so if the city's recommending hesitation or a denial, then the planning commission will follow that recommendation. Because, as John expressed, that's, that's critical in having those good relations with our neighbors and respecting that boundary. The challenge that has come up later after the fact is, the city initially said that we would show interest there, but then has clouded that by saying, we may not be able to provide water, so maybe we wouldn't. So there's a little bit of, of confusion, I think, that's created by that approach. What may be, the applicant may be served, best served by, is confirming what the engineer that provided the information, or confirming that it's accurate, and that there isn't a range there. When it talks, when they talk about water pressure and availability of water if they annex into a city.
Chris, Mendon City is drilling a new well. I do not know in my mind if that has been completed, and I do not know if it's a successful well. Does anyone know that?
I thought by his letter, it sounded like they're mad.
They started piping to the city for it.
I thought they've already found that it's successful.
Yes, and it's not about that.
And, yeah, no one.
Not very far from the other well that they deal.
The challenge they found is because of the location of the subdivision, it made it difficult to have adequate pressure to the subdivision, based on the size of the pipe needed to get there and the distance. And so that was the challenge that, on the one hand, the city was saying, we do have better water now, we're open and want to reconsider annexation. However, later on, they did some more checking, and the engineer they consulted said, we may not have enough pressure to provide them adequate pressure for a system. So there's a little bit of, of clouding of that issue that, that may add to that discussion.
Well, I, I made a motion, almost. So I'll, I'll make that a formal motion, that we go ahead and deny this, because of the fact that by granting an RU2 zone on 25 acres makes the possibility of a lot of homes out there. And it just doesn't fit with the, the area, and it doesn't fit with other things that are sitting there.
I'll second.
And are you waving the rules to do so?
I am waving the rules, yes. John said he'd second it.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm actually in, in support of this motion, because this, this, all these little clusters, this little clustering, right next to the control mechanism called a city, when we do a lot of this, once they're created, an RU2 zone, and they do their little cluster of homes, once they're created, they never want to be apart by the city. And, and then all of a sudden, we start annexing around them, around them. And, oh, the road goes through them, and we just keep creating all of these problems for us if we, you know, if we just create these developable zones of RU2 and RU5. And so personally, I, I support this denial for the mere fact that we are just going to keep creating, creating more and more of these problems unless we let the cities develop how they need to, and then take on those roads, take on those responsibilities, and, and do it right. I mean, we're fighting up there in, you know, with the river heights, and, you know, the road, and half of the road, and all this kind of stuff, because we've been playing with these different things versus strategically, step by step, working how it should be, giving responsibility to, and the development. The other thing is, we can't really, all of the water and all these other things, and whether it's feasible or not, that's not, that isn't us at all.
That's not ours.
We can't interject ourselves into that, in the development business. It's just a matter of what we can do. It's too costly for us to maintain roads, too costly for, you know, us to create a, a little town with a, another town surrounding it. So that's why I would support this motion.
That's always been the problem. If you annex into a city, you have to pay impact fees for parks, impact fees for roads, impact fees for water. You pay a lot of impact fees, and that's how they fund it. Well, I don't know that we're in, we should be in competition because we don't charge those impact fees to make it easier for developers to develop. We're not in the developing business. We have nothing to offer other than ground, but we hear all the complaints when we do it, because we can't do the roads, we can't get there. You know, I don't, I don't know that we want to be in the development business.
Thank you, Dave and John.
So, I'll make one comment before we vote, and that is, I don't disagree with, with any of that at all. And I think this speaks to our updating of the general plan, right? Because I think we've got a lot of folks that are sitting right on the boundaries of some cities that are in a literal, kind of catch-22 situation, that we need to develop. We need to get more housing. And you got folks sitting on city boundaries, and cities that, that won't annex, because they can't deliver the water. And then they'll sit out in the county and can't develop. So you're caught in the middle, and we've got that issue. So as long as we acknowledge that that's a big issue too, but all those things, yeah, that's, this is just a devilishly difficult scenario.
The success is where development does, and that can occur in the county, is in a lot lower density. The increased density, increased road use, and, I mean, that's where, you know, things are really, you know, I guess compounded.
Yeah. Which is why I think, in this case, we just don't have the right tool, right? If we could develop four lots, we'd probably be good. But the problem is, we don't have that option in front of us to say, okay, it's four lots.
That's all you can do.
We can just say it's 12 lots. Hopefully, you bid, you build four.
We don't have any control over it whatsoever.
Yeah.
Again, what has been said in the past, the RU2, RU5, is a, I hate it. And it was, when it was created, it was created as a large piece of ground, they would probably cluster into a corner, which then would keep them, it would actually create ag remainders and all that stuff, you know, to where it could still be farmed, and not have to take up the every 10 acre lot. And that's what, how it was originally kind of put together.
Yeah, I was there when we did it.
Right, and I was actually on planning the zone when that came out. That was the spirit of it. Well, the spirit got kicked out the door, and now the literal, the letter of the law. And that's why it needs to be reworked, made.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Looks like it passes.
I'm used to getting outvoted.
The motion passes. So, I'm sorry, but we, we did deny then the, the request for rezone. Thank you very much. Okay, we're not going to deal with 12B tonight.
Sheriff, sheriff. Sheriff, sheriff.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just point out also that number, item number 12C, and I apologize for not getting this to you before you approved the agenda. Item number 12C, ordinance 2020-17, adopting the consolidated fee schedule. Well, in our policy and ordinance review committee meeting this morning, John Luthy in our attorney's office pointed out that there's still some work that needs to be done on this.
I, I noticed that, and I was going to bring up some questions about that.
Okay. So he and my chief deputy Bryce are going to get together and, and finish that for your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we won't do 12C. Well, Sheriff, we're ready for your report.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry I'm late. I was just getting back from Weber County, so I, I apologize. I wasn't here on my scheduled time.
No problem. We waited.
I made it.
We filled up the time.
Well, I, I'm just going to want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with the impound facility and kind of let the council know where we're at with that. We've met with an architect. I, I think Matt's working with the most. We're planning a trip next week to Cedar City to look at the one they just built a couple of years ago, to get some ideas of size and, and those kind of things. We've also discussed with him about the storage that was brought up last council meeting that I was here. And he's going to actually draw two, two proposals. One, that would be the impound facility and some storage, and another one with just the impound facility. And we've also looked, Box Elder County just built similar to what, I think, what you guys have in mind with this, building some storage across the back piece of that property. And Box Elder County just built, I think, what, what this group is looking for. And the guy that we're going to draw the dog pound actually designed that facility over there as well. So he should be able to give us a pretty decent idea of size and cost and, and all that. Cedar City's next week, and I think your last council meeting this year, I think we can come back with, we'll at least a stick drawing, and some pretty good ideas of cost for one, or both, whatever, unless you guys make a decision on how you want to proceed forward with that.
That'll actually be our first meeting in January. This is our last meeting.
Oh, first meeting in January.
So Box Elder built theirs, then. It's, it's out of the ground now?
Their storage.
Storage?
Their storage facility.
Where is that at, if you want to drive by and just speak at it?
It's right behind the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't know where they were storing all that stuff before. They brought it all back to the campus of the sheriff's office. And I think it's a, you know, it's no, not a lot of frills to it. It's just a big metal building. It's got, you know, bigger bay doors for bigger trailers, smaller trailers. They did some, I think, similar to what we're looking at. And I had Matt put out to all the departments if, what would your storage needs be? And Box Elder kind of must have done the same thing, because they're just kind of built on a tier system. So they got the bigger bays with the bigger trucks and the trailer, but then they've got basically just regular storage units, about six, eight of them, just built out that are just eight by 10, storage unit size. And I don't think Matt's got all the information back from all the department heads, what they were looking for, storage-wise. But I think that would certainly save in cost and be more efficient for at least the, the space down there.
Do they do some temperature control in any of them?
They did in some of theirs. They actually have.
But don't they put a lot of their voting stuff and everything also?
Yeah, I'm not sure what they, what they, what they keep in there. No, the part that I did see, and this, this is just through the pictures, is they actually had, like, their maintenance guy was down there, and they got a little office space, they got a couple of bays that are heated, that have water, heating and air, that are temperature-controlled. But I'm not sure what they did with the voting machines and such, where they're storing those. But we can get some information from that, too.
And it's secured right by the sheriff's office?
It's secured, very secured. Down there, I think, when we get any, with or without the storage thing, down there, we're, we're going to fence off the rest of that piece of property down there, just because it's a secured facility, it needs to stay secured.
And we got another benefit. If you put it right next to the impound, the dogs could alert you if someone's coming.
There you go. After listening to those, we might have the earplugs in after too many dogs barking for so long.
I was going to say, what changed? The dogs are always barking.
I don't know, I stepped in the office today, and just heard an inmate just banging the wall. I don't know, I stepped in the office today and just heard an inmate just banging the walls to death and that rung my ears off, but dogs will be a pleasant change. That's what we have, hopefully, the first meeting in January can at least come with an idea of cost, what it's gonna look like, size wise, what he feels he can fit onto that piece of property, and we'll have a better report for you then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we're on to the back page now. Uh, other county business, the only thing listed is the county employee's Christmas dinner.
Mr. Chairman, we missed.
Yeah, we do the budget.
What did we miss?
Eleven A and B.
Pass over the hard part.
Eleven A and B pending action, oh, yes, we did. The biggies.
The exciting stuff.
Yeah. What Dave calls the exciting stuff, the budget.
Yeah, the exciting stuff.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, eleven A, ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, providing for salaries for members of the Cache County Council for twenty twenty-one. I think Gordon made the suggestion that we go to the same level as Morgan County, is that what you said?
Similar. Similar.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I I think that we haven't increased the council's salary. When I looked it up, last time there was an increase, it was forty-nine dollars, and it was in December of twenty fifteen. That was the last time there was any increase, and I think that a three percent cost of living increase is not unreasonable to the taxpayers. It's something that we've been giving the employees, it's something we've been giving to other elected officials. As far as this being so low, like, half of what the next step up, I mean, my understanding is even the Tulac County Commission, who's coming onboard next year, that their salary will be twenty-two thousand. We don't get benefits, so there's, it's just the twelve thousand. I think we should form a committee or send it to the, um, compensation committee and have them take a look at it and make a recommendation to us, because it is hard for us to raise our own salary, that's really uncomfortable, and, you know, the legislature has a committee that looks at and makes recommendations on on raising it, and it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard thing for the public. You know, it's a weird thing to be like, yeah, we raised our salary, I mean, I would like a recommendation from a committee that studies it and and gives us some ideas. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
I agree with you, um, the only challenge is, is that will really fit in better for next year. And I think what we should do is, we should have that, if Amy will take note, that that should be one of the things that we discuss in compensation committee next year to make a recommendation for the council. But I also think we should deal something with, um, our salaries this year. And I'm gonna throw this out, and then everybody can just kick it around and decide where you want to be. But I would suggest that the the council, um, move up to, um, three thousand a year, which is almost triple what it is now, but that is still way, 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 way below anyone else. And so that's a starting point, and we can all discuss that and and see just exactly what you think.
Clar- clarify what the?
Well, our yearly, our year, our yearly compensation would be three thousand dollars a year for council members.
Oh, it's, we're, we're.
Boy, that's, that's a deduct, you get twelve now.
No, that would be the total.
No, we're, you're more than that now.
Yeah.
It's twelve now.
Twelve thousand.
I guess I'm doing it wrong, increase three thousand.
Increase three thousand.
Yours is on fifteen.
Yes. I don't add very good when I'm speaking.
The best I ever heard was, I hate doing math in public.
Okay.
I decided never to.
Yeah, it shows you how smart you are, doesn't it?
Well, Gordy, I, uh, it may be on you to make a motion, specify the numbers.
I thought everybody would raise their hand and add something to, but I'd make that motion, that we add three thousand to it to make it to fifteen.
So you're saying fifteen nine twenty-five?
Correct.
Fifteen nine twenty-five.
Geez, that's too high, you ought to call it fifteen.
Okay, a motion has been made, uh, discussion on the motion.
So I, I'll wade into it, um, I've thought about this a lot over the course of time, you, I think you have two different ways you look at this, that we have got our, uh, our civic duty. People in the Cache, in Cache County have a civic duty to participate in self-governance. And if we look at this as you've got a civic duty to do it, um, the amount of remuneration should be, you know, that's just your, that's just your duty. So is it a buck, is it two bucks, is it five bucks, is it nothing, you're doing your duty. But then also, you you want to have, that limits the number of people that can participate, right? It's it's easy to participate in the community and go volunteer for a few hours a week. But as we all know, this is easy, a twenty-hour-a-week job, not just in the meetings you have to go to, but the committees, you have to do the things, you have to uh, research land use, right, the people you have to follow up with to make any decision, it's easy, twenty hours a week. And if if you, if if I as a citizen want somebody representing me, you want some professional representation. I mean, I pay a lot of money for professional representation, I was on a a call with some attorneys before I came here, and I'm paying those guys hundreds of dollars an hour. And we're making less than what I can make at Taco Bell an hour. So you figure you're either doing it as a civic duty for nothing, and I think in an ideal world, we could just, uh, get a deduction on our taxes for doing this at our, at our, uh, normal rate. I could say, hey, I did twenty hours a week in the county, just deduct that from my taxes rather than getting paid, that'd be a great thing to do. But if we want professional representation like we do with the county attorney, with the sheriff, with the county executive, and you want professional representation, this body should have professional representation for the citizens as well. And it takes a lot to do it, and in order for that to happen with all the members of the of the county from, no matter where you are in life, it's gonna take away from what you do to make a living for your family, you should be able to supplement that if you're gonna do it. So I don't think it's unreasonable to pay for professional representation.
I'd also like to add too that, um, with with an increase, I think it puts, um, I don't want to say pressure, but it helps put us in place to provide that service to the members of the county and do it in a professional manner, like Paul has said, and, um, do our due diligence in everything that we're assigned to do.
Any other comments? There's a motion that has been made, is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I've thought a lot about this too, since it was brought up. And, uh, you know, I keep thinking, what is it that entices, you know, that brings people to civic responsibility, civic duty? You know, is, what is the carrot that does that, is it just who we are? Uh, in a lot of ways, apparently, it is who we are, brought us to this. But, uh, you know, and then when you get involved with it and you're, uh, as you get more involved with it and you want to learn more so you could do this better, uh, it become, it does become quite taxing on time, along. But you keep doing it, we keep jumping in there, we keep, you know, trying to learn, and and we educate ourselves along with it, and last night, in my excitement, as I just go on, going over, it's, you know, boy, I had, you know, the, my laptop and I had the, my iPad there, intended budget and another one, and I was trying to look at four different budget, they're, they're supposed to be alike. And, uh, I was putting all those together and everything, and, uh, finally, I went to bed about twelve thirty. And, uh, but hey, it's it's part of what we try to do to make sure that we do things right. But it's, it's still a lot of heartburn trying to say is, do we do it for, I don't think any of us does it for the money, but that compensation then allows us, I guess, to pull us away from things that we could be doing for money to, uh, I think it's our unselfishness that keeps us doing it. And, uh, and I get, I guess it kind of maintains some purity of why we do it, what we do. I had one question that I had is, uh, and Amy, I think, she could probably answer this better than any of it, any of us right now, is the, is there a health insurance option? You know, that, uh, see people, there might be someone that is out there looking, saying, you know, if I could get a health insurance and I could work, and then see, a lot of people are out working at other things to probably get insurance, health insurance, but would would an option for the council to maybe be insured through the county be a, uh, some incentive for people to come in and and do, you know, to run for these offices and serve, I don't know, or can it be deducted from the compensation, total cost, I don't know.
There used to be, but the insurance goes, insurance got costing more than the pay for the council.
When I, Gordy, when I first come on, uh, when I had the incentives for me to come on where I'm self-employed, I was paying a lot of money out for insurance, which, you know, self-employed people are still doing, and at that point, the compensation was enough to cover, um, for the county to insure me. And within two years, insurance went up so high, the council wasn't willing to follow it, and and as a result, then, you know, then you just get what they they say, but Amy, if we was to insure the council and their families, isn't it far more and more, far more than than what we're talking here?
Yes, it is.
What would it be at right now?
The cost for a family insurance, between the two, it's about sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Nineteen thousand a year.
Yeah.
That would just be insurance, there's a lot of other things that go along with that, if that was something that you chose as well, um, because then it would bring you the tier two people for URS, we would have to, URS, as well, so there's additional costs there.
Yeah, as I recall, within, within two years of serving on the council, the charge took off. The council didn't want to address what we're addressing here today, so we stayed exactly the same for years and years and years.
I'm trying to just somehow just pull this all together to where it would make sense to to me to keep bringing the people the county needs in these positions.
And I think that that, the other thing I was thinking about that I didn't mention earlier, is, you know, I'm fine to leave it as it is. We, and I think every one of us here is fine to leave it as it is. What we're talking about is what do you do going forward in life? Because you leave it where it's at, and you have certain people that are civic-minded that are gonna run, but that's a very limited number of folks, especially if you're in there earning money for your family, you're in your prime earning years, you only have a limited amount of time. People that you would love to have serve on the county council, just look at it and do the cost benefit and go, I'm not gonna do it. You'll have civic-minded people that do it, but you leave it so low, you eliminate a good portion of the of the population. And then you'll also have people that have very ideological reasons to run. That'll, that'll run that aren't in it for anything other than to push something.
Agenda.
And and push an agenda where you'd want to have the biggest cross-section of the population possible. And if we expand the, if we expand what you get paid to do this, would that increase the cross-section of people that would then choose to run for office?
Well, I can give you my spiel now, because I'm not, I'm the only one here that's not gonna get paid. When I ran, when I first ran, I didn't know you got paid.
Neither did we.
I I think you run, there's three reasons you run for a job. You got an axe to grind, money, or you're civic-minded. And I hope that, I think everybody here ran because they're civic-minded. I don't think that twelve thousand is why you ran, and I think you can raise it to fifteen thousand or twenty thousand. You're still gonna get the same caliber of person. I think you gotta, if you're doing this for, to make your living, you're in big trouble. Now, if if you're saying we're gonna raise it because we meet, if you met at twelve o'clock, I would say you gotta raise the price. Because the only person that can serve on here is somebody like Gordon or Carl that's on, uh, social security, I mean, uh, Medicare, Medicaid, you retired. You know, it's hard for somebody my age to run unless you're getting paid, you know, Medicare. So I think that I was always against it for that very reason. I thought that, you know, you you come here because you want to be a service, you want to, you want to help somebody. And, uh, but at the same time, you gotta be fair. And and your time is worth as much as somebody else's time. I look at my follower there, Nolan, he, he's not quite as old, so for him, when he comes to meeting, it's it's something he's gonna have, you know, you gotta compensate him for it. And I think you have a legitimate concern.
Nolan, every day has to go out and make a living for his family, and when he takes the time off to come in here, and not only he's civil, civic-minded, but he's also got to have people willing to compensate him for him to leave his business. And that's what I always was challenged with, I remember at different times, it just wasn't practical for me to get off the tractor and come to a new meeting, but I did. And, uh, you know, the next day, you start where you left. But, uh, you gotta be, you know, the public has got to be fair with you for the time that you spend. They don't, they won't, they, uh, wouldn't feel bad about compensating you for something that was fair. Of course, they don't want to overdo it, but I think we need to be, as a council, willing to not only look out for our own interests, but the future of people. I'm I'm leaving in two years, and so if if we're gonna attract someone that's, that's, um, probably far better than me, you've got to be able to be there, you know, you gotta step up.
And and to that point, I think people should know too, I mean, you look at it, you think, okay, two nights a month to start at five o'clock, so you're not in, you're not working anymore. But each one of us is on how many boards of committees, five, six?
Yeah.
Those don't meet after hours, those meet during the workday.
That's right.
And most of us here, they are very fortunate that we have a flexible schedule that we could do. But if you've got a, if you've got a a job that you're working for someone else and you need to take the time off to go your your service, um, and and for those boards, maybe you need to take vacation time, are you getting compensated for that?
That's why you had to quickly.
There's, there's, there's those kind of things, the the RAPS meetings, how many RAPS meetings do y'all have over the course of a year to just administer that program?
And it's important we go to those meetings, I think people don't understand, I I put this on Facebook, and I had really a wide result of different comments, but one of them was, why don't you cut your hours back? And I tried to explain, because you know, that is the first thing you think, well, yeah, just cut your hours back. But I don't think that they understood the depth of what we try to do as a council to understand what's going on in the community, to serve on these different boards, to have county and council, uh, input on those boards, to understand the issues so that we don't just become a rubber stamp for whoever comes in here, and we're like, oh, that sounds good, okay, you know, we we have to delve into those issues to to be good public servants.
They absolutely do, I I don't know how long it takes you all to read everything that we get for our agendas each each week, but I'm a good, at least ten hours. And, uh, by the time you digest the the minutes and follow up with anything that might be, have to be dealt with, and you read all through the planning commission notes and minutes and and, uh, review, uh, the ordinances and the language that are specified in the ordinances, it's, uh.
It's a, it's a time commitment.
It's a time commitment, yeah.
And then the other thing that that we need to realize, and that is all the phone calls that we get and all the time, we gotta be court to the people and visit with them. And, uh, that takes a period of time, and and we're willing to do it because we do it, but.
I would love to have the county council on tape version.
Now, this is a debate to justify.
All this information, I could just sit and listen to it on my way to Milford, you know?
Well, Dave, I'll read it to you while you're going, and we'll both be figuring it out together.
Kim, could you read the budget?
Did somebody second this?
No.
No, no one's seconded.
Oh, I was gonna call for a question.
You gotta second it first before you can call for a question, John. Step up to the bat.
There's, there's a motion in play, but it has not been seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, was there a call for?
Question.
Okay.
No question, I wanna vote.
We gotta vote.
Okay, all right. All in favor of, uh, Gordy's, uh, motion for the county council salaries, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I abstained.
I'll, I'll say aye.
Four gets, four gets two?
Yeah, it's four to, four to two.
What did you do then, Dave?
I said nay.
Motion failed, didn't it?
So, motion, motion failed, yep.
He abstained, so there's four ayes.
No, there's only three.
I'm not, that's a nay.
It's a nay, okay.
I'm a nay.
We're a nay.
Right, yep, so failed to pass.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll move that we approve, um, this ordinance with the council member, um, compensation at, uh, twelve nine twenty-five and fourteen seven twenty-five for the chair. And ask the, um, compensation committee to come back with a recommendation to look at this issue and, and give us a recommendation to raise the county council salary.
Okay.
So I, just so that I'm clear, are you saying that we approve as it's stated on the paper right now?
Right.
As it was recommended to us in the, for the ordinance, and then...
That's a three percent.
A three percent.
Yeah.
Cost of living increase, and then ask the compensation committee to look into it further. When are you hoping for the compensation committee to come back with a recommendation?
Before next year.
Well, you do.
Maybe a year, yeah, get it in the next budget. Not next week.
Well, well, isn't the thing is, is we've gotta pass a budget tonight, don't we, for?
Yeah, we do.
And so, I, I guess what we're saying with that, uh, with that motion, the meeting with the compensation committee, that whatever we discuss will be for, be for...
You'd have to have a...
Yeah, future budget, yeah.
So, just, I have a question then, for Cameron. This, this three percent increase for the council, is that what is in the current budget?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what they stole us. Okay, motion's been made to, uh, approve, uh, twenty twenty dash sixteen ordinance. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Oh, I'll say, I, actually, I will second that, sorry. I, I'm still dwelling, my mind's still going all of a sudden. I will second Gina's motion.
Okay, let's, let, let...
We, uh, let's see, did you second Gina's?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, Gina made the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, uh, council, uh, county council salaries, uh, as, as written here. It's the three percent cost of living increase. And did you say you seconded that then, Dave?
But then, you know, the rest of that is that you can have the compensation committee look at it.
Right, right.
You know, just follow through on some...
Okay. All right, with that motion in, and, and the second, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
I figured I'd stay on that train.
All right. That passes. All right, we have one other, one to, uh, to deal with. Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, adopting the twenty twenty-one cash county budget. And Dave, you spent till twelve thirty last night reading it. Are there any questions or concerns about the budget itself?
Two pages. But, uh, I addressed quite a few of them, but, uh, I, I just, I did have a few. There, you know, there's, as you go through this, and you, you seriously, you, you work through all these details, you look at every department, and you look at previous years and trends in some of those years, you know? You know, I, I did have the questions, and I talked to some of you on, uh, there were several of the departments that did have, you know, some pretty good percentage increases in, uh, education and travel. And, uh, from the previous year, and especially the year before, and I started thinking, okay, are, were we not able to educate our workforce, or are we not, you know, uh, what, what's this jump? I think there are certifications that are necessary for a lot of our employees. But, you know, some of this is just, you know, kind of a jump there, and I've talked to several people, and, uh, some of them have, uh, you know, some pretty good chunks, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight percent, a hundred percent, a hundred, twelve hundred and forty percent, you know? And so there's a pretty good jump in those areas, okay? And, uh, so I was looking at those, and I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna pick out specific ones. Uh, I, I worry that, I hope that it's because they need the education rather than we're just, hey, put it there so that we can then move it somewhere else later. I have more confidence in our employees and for the county that I think that is necessary, and they probably haven't been able to take advantage of some things this past year, as well as, uh, maybe there hasn't been adequate enough in those departments, you know, to get those certifications, to, uh, give credence as to what they do in their department, you know, and backing. The other things that, uh, I will, there is one item that I was, I was shocked. And I don't want, I hate to bring this one up, but, uh, Sheriff Jensen, that the uniform cost from one year to the other, such a dramatic cost on that, what, what's caused that?
On the uniform?
Yeah, from a thirty-five hundred dollars the previous year to twenty-five thousand. Are you changing styles, or, no?
I'm not sure. Well, I, I'm not sure what I can look at it.
Well, it was just, you know, that's, that's kind of a dramatic, I'm, I'm wondering, well, is there, maybe there's a logo change on things that, you know, that, things, it's just questions that you have when you're going through this, that I'm sure there's, there's purpose, but I just, uh, you know, wanna make sure. I had a question on, uh, and I think is Matt here? I just had another question on the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for purchase, land purchases. Is that, where does, where does that fit in? I'm, we've probably talked about it, but where, where is that money going?
What are you talking about? It's in the road department, I believe, is where you're looking, Dave.
Yeah, there's, like, last year it was a hundred and twenty-five, and this year a hundred and twenty. What land purchases are original?
That's a, that's one that's been in there for multiple years. That's so that something comes up, or there's an opportunity for us to purchase right away, or there's a project that requires us to purchase right away, even if we have that money available. Most of the time, that goes unused and gets rolled back into the funds, so...
Is, is it building? Or is it being used?
Um, it's, it's been, my knowledge is it's been a reserve, so that, say, um, if the land becomes available, or we need to purchase right away for a capital improvement project. It's not for buildings, it's, it's more or less for right-of-way acquisitions that become available that year. And it's, it's been in there for quite a while. It's not, it goes back into...
I notice three years ago, zero. But then all of a sudden, we'll pass two, this year and next year, we're...
So, if the road department has an opportunity to, you know, landowners change hands, or we need to go in and purchase some runway for drainage, or a turnaround that we need to negotiate for our files, and it's money that's been there and it's been available for them the last few years.
And, uh, and I, I've, I've thought about things like that too, and I'm, I'm a little, I was just a little worried. Are we taking money, uh, would that be better on, as those needs come up, to them to be able to go into the fund reserve or something like that, and then pull them out on an as-need basis? Or to just build that fund?
That's, that's a good question. I, I think it's valuable to have that there, because you never know what opportunities will come up, you know? But, you know, that's coming, that stays in the road budget, that doesn't go back into the general fund, that stays within the road budget. And so it just keeps, you still have the money that was there back here, and the same money that was there this year, be the same money there, so, so it's just, it just keeps getting rolled over. Whatever gets used, it gets used. So it's, it's not...
It doesn't happen.
Money away from another department or another...
Yeah.
Other thing, so we could either leave it there, when that was came up, we could open the budget, allocate it in there, spend it, we, we could do that way, but the way Josh had it set up, it was, we just kinda decided that that was a, a good fund to keep going forward, so we could pursue those opportunities if they came up, whether for land purchases or for, but it is, the intent is to use that for right-of-ways or easements and stuff that come up throughout the year for drainage or whatnot, or for road. We need to buy road.
I, I appreciate that and everything, but I, I keep, I worry, I worry about public funds a little bit, where they, if they are not a specific dedication to something that is planned, specifically planned and going to happen or something, I worry about just putting it there. And also, now, if, if you aren't, if it isn't already designated to happen within the next year or two as a specific project, I worry about just having it there. And so, to me, having it there would be back into the general fund or fund balance, and, you know, and then keeping it there until we need it. But that's, I'm just, you know, it's, it's helping me understand.
And you, you have a good point, Dave, and as I learn more about that part, like I said, it's been there. You know, that's the time it's been there, and that's, it's been moving in order, so we've kept that, but, right.
Well, I appreciate that. Sheriff Jensen, you got an answer?
Well, I, I think so.
Okay.
There's a, well, actually, see, I don't know what year we're looking at, we actually had, last year we spent a lot about the new vest carriage, but this year we're looking, and I think our funding allowance numbers went down.
Well, I, I was looking, boy, I had three of them, and it went from thirty-five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand five hundred.
Can't find it in here.
Well, you're still looking there, and the, the other one, though, is, can I ask, uh, a little, just a little clarification on the ice arena, we're giving them another sixteen thousand a year, uh, when we were already giving them eighty thousand a year on a, something that we agreed to a few years ago for ten years. And now all of a sudden, let me throw another sixteen, and I'm, I'm not in... The eighty thousand was to help them build some fund.
Yeah, that they could perpetually...
And I was mad as heck about that in the first place that we did that.
That was for perpetual operation.
Right, but...
No more money.
You know, I don't know too many county, uh, county things that happen that should have a little, like, say, a, a rainy day fund, just kind of built, sitting there and build up, so they can start functioning off of the interest off that or things. I don't know, I just, I think that, uh, taxpayer money should be, uh, very wise year to year to year. And, uh, little, little things like that, just, uh, you know, and, and then, uh, I know there's a few items in there that, uh, you know, I'm not disagreeing with a lot of the things, except the few items in there that, that need a more specific designation. Our miscellaneous services, when people put, uh, in budgets, that, I hate that, because that's just kinda like, we use it willy-nilly for what we want to. They ought to have a little more specific title to, uh, the miscellaneous service, uh, heading, rather than... And when they ask an increase in that, I'm going, well, what did you use, you know, we had, we didn't see really what you used it for unless we go to the specifics, but what was it budgeted for? And we're, our purpose is to go through the budget and to scrutinize it to a point to where, yes, every dollar the taxpayer's happy to spend. Well, are they? But every dollar, you know, is, is prudent in what we do, so... Uh, Craig, you probably had a comment?
Yeah, and, you know, I wasn't able to check in, in depth into that sixteen thousand for the ice arena, but if I get, if I've got my history right, what happened is initially, we had a lot of the cities that were contributing to, to the ice arena and to the, to the youth programs that they have. And so they came back to some of those cities and asked them to still support those youth programs. So I'm thinking that's what that is, but I'll, I will, you know, follow up on that and find out for sure what that sixteen thousand, additional sixteen thousand's being used for. You got that, Cameron? Okay.
Some amount of funding, we just agree to that. Um, back when this, uh, started with the ice arena, there was the sports and rec tax that the state allowed municipalities to, to add to their sales tax. And, uh, that come to an end when the bonds for their facility would be paid off, which happened in two thousand and twelve. And so at that time, the ice arena, uh, administration went around and asked the municipalities to please donate what would have been carved out by the tax commission, or what was being carved out by the tax commission in the past, so that, uh, they could continue to, to raise those funds. Um, the county at that time agreed to, I believe it was a four or five-year extension to do that, and then, uh, the executive director went around again at the end of that period, so around in twenty sixteen, it says, can we do that again? And, and the county council agreed to do that again at that time, the sixteen thousand, and it's just that agreement to say, here, we calculated this, uh, one sixty-fourth of a percent, I think, is what it is of, of the sell, of the local sales tax, not the county option sales tax, um, to then be, uh, given to the ice rink as a community support. The other amount that comes out of RAPS tax, um, initially was kind of a, he keeps calling it an endowment support. Uh, specifically, we can't award that for an endowment support. We can award that for his operations, and he can take other money and, and set that aside and, and help build up a fund that he can use interest for. But, uh, there are two separate buckets of money. One was RAPS support that was paying the bond, um, the other one was, uh, from the municipalities. And so he's, uh, requested that the county do both of those, and, and in the past, the counties agreed to do both of those.
And I'm not against the Echols. The Echols ice, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm one of those that I, if it costs, you know, three hundred thousand dollars to run that thing, okay, then, that's what it costs for that year. It shouldn't be three hundred and ninety-six thousand, so we can put some into a little cavity.
Right, right.
And start building that.
Yeah.
I, that's, that's how I feel, I, I think that's, but, and all these other, I, I don't mean to be, you know, so nitpicky on things, but, uh, it's just, uh, I, I think there's a, everything else, I tell you, and I, these are just ones that popped out to me, but everything else is just, I, I think that our county is doing extremely well. I mean, they're doing good at the monies that are given to them. Uh, the increases where we put to help out some personnel, to bring some personnel, I honestly feel that they are needed. You know, for those personnel to, again, we're getting bigger. Our, our population, our, our needs and everything, they are, they're growing, uh, uh, I, other than that, some of these little nitpicky things, just things that pop out to me, and so I want just some clarification, and I appreciate that very much, yes.
Um, I can, I think, uh, overall, my, I'm, you know, from, like, I'm, overall, from my whole office, it actually went down by...
Oh, yeah, I, I saw that.
But that one was in search and rescue, and I'm sure it's because they're buying coats and helmets and stuff for, they replace those every two years. So I think that was the purchase in search and rescue, why that one...
They will need a storage area for that, won't they?
We're open.
So the dogs can't chew it.
I, I appreciate that, I really do. You know, please, please know that I appreciate that, so...
Cameron, wasn't that ice arena, wasn't that supposed to, uh, at some point come to a point where that wasn't gonna be requested anymore? They was gonna get an endowment to a certain point, and then it was gonna end?
I, I think that's, that's right. Their, the initial pitch was that way, anyway, that they wanted to build up to a certain amount, and they wouldn't need to continue asking. This is, how far that goes through?
Just wondering how much longer it was gonna be that way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have that in front of me, but...
It was a goal that they wanted to get at.
Yeah.
Had an ice arena meeting for a long time, so I guess I'm...
Right.
A little bit behind as to where they're at.
Yeah, no, but if, if, I, I'm not certain, and I'm unclear, I know there's still a few more years, but if it's twenty-five, that's, that seems right, so...
Okay.
Anything else, Dave?
I'm going to bed earlier tonight.
Uh, council members, do you have anything, any other questions on the budget? This is a pending action item, we need to act on it tonight. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and waive the rules and that we, uh...
Well, this is actually pending action, we don't even have to raise the rules.
So we don't have to waive the rules. I, I would, motion that we go ahead and improve the county budget for, for this upcoming year.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Thank you, Dave. You, you kept us entertained, even at seven thirty at night. No, no, you know, I'll, I'll just make a, I'll just make a comment. I'm so impressed with this council, and how careful. and how careful we are with, with the taxpayers' money, and that we are, we do very carefully, or take very seriously, the, the responsibility that we have, because it's not our money, it's, uh, it's money paid by the taxpayers that we're to use in providing necessary services, and I just really appreciate and am pre, and impressed by everybody in their, diligence in studying it and knowing what it is. I mean, this came out, I think, in, in our discussion about, um, council members' salaries, is that to, to be able to really do this and do it right, you have to put in some diligent and, and long hours in order to make that happen, and I appreciate very much working with such a great group of people, thank you. Alright, I think the last thing, is it the last thing? Did I miss something again? Council member reports?
I'll yield my time to the honorable John White, since he says last, uh...
I was gonna call on him last, so that he could have the last word. Gina?
I'd just like to tell, um, John how much I appreciate working with him, and he'll really be missed. I, I appreciate the knowledge and expertise that John brought to the council, and his level-headed thinking, and I loved how, John, you weren't afraid to say how you feel, but always in a kind way, and if we disagree, we're still friends, and, uh, I've appreciated my association with you and, and Vicky, and thank you sincerely for your service to the people of this valley, thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Barbara?
I just wanted to tell John thanks, and he'll be missed, and...
Thank you for the trout.
Gordy?
Many, many years ago, his dad Barney was on the soil conservation district, and Barney asked if he could quit sponsoring the trout for the, the conservation district, and I was the chairman at that time, and I took Barney aside, and I says, Barney, we just don't wanna quit going to your, your facility there in Paradise and having that trout dinner, that's the highlight of the, of the whole year, and I said, Barney, I, I believe we got John and Grant that can take it over pretty easily with taking the burden away from you, and I suggest that we still do it, and, uh, let's just tap into John and Grant, and Barney called me back and said, I talked with the boys, and that would be fine, and they've continued to do it, not only for the conservation district board, but they've been doing it for the county for many, many years, and John, thank you, thank you for your friendship, and thankful for the use of your facility, and thankful for your family, we appreciate your family, and they've been, they've been community-minded for years and years and years, and I know they'll continue to be that way, and, and, uh, there's, there's no greater family in, in Cache Valley than the White family, and they've, they've really set an example for us all, so appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate all the wisdom that you brought to the council, and, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Dave?
So, I was gonna use him. No, I, I have to ditto everything that's been said, uh, I sure am glad I, hopefully I've never offended you more than once a night, but I, I have to, I have grown by your leadership, and I appreciate that sincerely, I really do. I, my wife, when she did this little Christmas thing here, and by the way, these little masks that are on here, they're not recycled. But on the back of it says, thank you for your commitment, encouragement, investment, and involvement, and, uh, I think that just about describes Dr. John White. And by the way, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Okay, John, the last word is yours.
Merry Christmas to all of you. It, it's been an honor. I, I've truly, I can truly say I've enjoyed it. I got to know, I've got to know different peoples, uh, one thing about it, I got to voice my opinion, and we may not always have agreed, but when it was done, it was done, and that's what I think is so good about this council, eh, you know, if everybody had the same opinion, life wouldn't be too much fun, and, uh, it, it's, it's been a real pleasure, I, I, I will miss it, I didn't think I would. I told my wife, I've been here long enough, it's time to get out of here, but now it's over, I'll miss it. But I think you got a, a good man down there gonna take, take my place, he's, it's been fun, I've liked working with Chris, you know, I've been, I've been on that planning and zoning, I think, I don't know, seven, eight, a whole bunch of years, but, but I've really enjoyed it. I mean, it, it's an opportunity, and I hope that we never raise the price enough that people run for the money. I hope, I hope that day never comes, because I think that's where we are with the federal government, it's an occupation. This isn't an occupation, this is a service, and I think we all need to remember that. I'd like to commend Cameron, that this is the best budget I've ever gone through, you know, I, I missed luncheons after, but boy, it was, you know? Not too many meetings, you handled it real well, and, but on the serious side, I would like to thank all of the people that work for the, e- even James back there, you know?
I'll miss John most of all.
I, I feel, I feel bad, I was finally gonna vote for Davenport Road, and it never came out. But, but, you know, you look at the sheriff's office, you look at how the county has grown, this budget has, compared to what the growth is, you guys, everybody has kept an under. I really appreciate our HR lady, I think it's wonderful, she comes in, bright, you're all good. It's, it's been a pleasure, e- even the fireman back there does a good job, but it really has been fun, and thank you for the opportunity. It, it's been a good thing in my life.
Thank you so much, John. John and I have been friends for many years, but, uh, we appreciate everything he's done, and I'll just, I'll just sum up, because we finished the budget, we went through some, uh, tough discussions tonight, and spent a lot of time, and, uh, and I'll just say again that, uh, I'm very appreciative, appreciative of this county, and John, I second what you said about, uh, why we run and why we're here, because it's to serve and not to, not to make this a political career, and, uh, that's, that's why we're here, and I appreciate everybody. With that, I'll say, hit the gavel and say Merry Christmas to everybody.
Well, we made it, John, through another year.
Yeah. Dang near did.